Buenos en Hafa Day, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this virtual public hearing to order. It is now 9:04 a.m., Wednesday, February 9th, 2022. Notice of this morning's virtual hearing is provided via email to senators, stakeholders in the local media on February 2nd, 2022, for the five-day notice, and February 7th, 2022, for the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of open government law. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Telotitigui, Senator Joanne Brown. The purpose of this virtual public hearing is to receive testimony on the following agenda items: to hear testimony on Bill Number 239-36COR, sponsored by Senator Telotitigui, co-sponsored by Senators Joanne Brown, Speaker Theresa M. Terlali, and Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to add a new section 70134 to Chapter 70 of Division 3, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to business license requirements for entities engaging in the placement of children in adoptive homes. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, February 16th, 2022. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, or it could be dropped off the mailboxes at the Guam Congress voting, or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. So the rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing are as follows: the host of the hearing will mute all participants until called upon by the chair. A virtual background should not be utilized during this hearing, and the participant's face must be visible at all times. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking into your microphone. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. The order of questioning will begin with the chairperson, followed by senators. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda, and personal inference as to character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. So I also like to now acknowledge the presence of Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton. Okay, now to begin our agenda, Bill Number 239-36COR, sponsored by Senator Telotitigui, co-sponsored by Senators Joanne Brown, Theresa M. Terlali, and Sabina Flores Perez, is an act to add a new section 70134 to Chapter 70 of Division 3, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to business license requirements for entities engaging in the placement of children in adoptive homes. Notices were sent to Department of Public Health and Social Services, as well as Department of Revenue and Taxation, and we're glad to see Director Daphne Shimizu here, representing Department of Revenue and Taxation, and Mayfe Muco of Department of Public Health and Social Services. Thank you for being here. The fiscal note received on January 11th, 2022, notes from BBMR as follows: "The bill has the potential to generate additional revenues in relation to business license fees collected by DRT. However, absent additional information from DRT as to the new business license category to be established for child adoption services and fees associated, with obtaining and renewing that license, the Bureau is unable to determine an approximate financial impact at this time." We did receive written testimony from Lori Boss, Executive Director of Ahala Adoptions, and I believe two other testimonies that I believe are here today to present oral testimony in support or in addition to the written testimony. I'd like to now welcome the author of the bill, Senator Telotitigui, to provide opening remarks for Bill 239-36. Now the floor is yours, Senator.
Hafa Day, and good morning, Madam Chair, and thank you so much for scheduling the public hearing for Bill 239-36COR, and for the opportunity to introduce the measure. You know, with the support of Senator Brown, Speaker Theresa Terlali, and yourself, I introduce Bill 239 mandating the Department of Revenue and Taxation to require an independent adoption agency to obtain an endorsement from the Department of Public Health and Social Services prior to DRT granting the adoption agency a business license and/or an establishment of a GRT account or a EIN number. If approved, Bill 239 ensures that any loophole that exists which could allow an adoption agency to operate with little to no involvement by Public Health is closed. Madam Chair, Bill 239 is part of our latest effort in ensuring that steps are taken administratively to remove any opportunity for bad actors who have the means to navigate their way through a system that currently lacks licensure, rules, and regulations to get anywhere close to our most vulnerable children. Although a majority of senators this past December finally realized there was a need for licensure, rules, and regulations, there is nothing in place right now that require an independent adoption agency to meet specific conditions. All it needs to do is obtain a license at DRT under a service license. Madam Chair, in closing, while we all wait for the development of interim rules by Public Health for the licensure of independent adoption agencies, which is a mandate by law to happen no later than June of this year, subject to further actions by this legislature, policies must be established now to cover the businesses that are already authorized to operate absent the interim rules and promulgations of adoptions, a final set of licensure rules and regs. For the record, independent adoption agencies have been authorized to operate pursuant to two bills which were approved since July of 2021, particularly Public Law 36-39, which allows a child to be placed in an adopted home by "social service" or an adoption agency duly licensed under Guam law. That's current without rules and regulations governing this independent adoption agency. So Madam Chair, Bill 239 simply proposes that all independent adoption agencies shall be endorsed by Public Health prior to operating as a legitimate business on Guam. It's very simple. Madam Chair, after discussing Bill 239 with additional members of our community, including those first on taxation and business license matters, I intend to work closely with the committee to amend the bill by deleting the proposed 11 GCA Section 70134A in the bill and to strengthen the language in proposed 11 GCA Section 70134B. So it is clear that revenue and taxation shall require an independent adoption agency to obtain an endorsement from Department of Public Health and Social Services prior to DRT granting the adoption agency a business license and/or the establishment of GRT account or EIN. Basically, Madam Chair, by eliminating A, it eliminates anything that DRT has to do with regards to creating any kind of regulations as stipulated in Section A administratively or any such as that. Example, the cosmetology board. DRT does not oversee any type of regulations or rules. It's all done by a board, and once an individual who finishes the requirements established by Department of Public Health and Social Services, all they do next is go to DRT and obtain an EIN number or a GRT number to pay their taxes. It's as simple as that, and that's the intention of this bill now, that we will delete this section A of the bill and then move only into B. So Madam Chair, I look forward to the discussions, including, you know, additional amendments that may be needed going forward. Tijus Massey, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to present the overview of Bill 239. Tijus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Titigui. So now I'd like to recognize Director Shimizu. I know she has an engagement at TEN, so I'd like to allow her to go first. So Director Shimizu, you're recognized.
Hafa Day, and thank you so much, Chairwoman Sabina Flores Perez, and also members of the committee. Also, I wanted just to make sure I recognize Senators Ada, Senator Titigui, Senator Brown, Senator Shelton, and of course, former Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, Artie Loggins, and other members of the community who may be present. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony regarding Bill 239-36. The bill proposes to require the Department of Revenue and Taxation to develop a business license category and other administrative requirements necessary to obtain a business license to operate a child adoption service or agency in conformance with child adoption laws and regulations. The agency is in support of the bill, as with other business licenses issued for industries where there is a need for oversight and regulation by the Department of Health and Social Services. Should this bill become law, DRT will work with the Department of Public Health and Social Services to ensure that only those businesses with the appropriate endorsement from the Department of Public Health and Social Services will be issued a business license. DRT does make the following recommendations regarding Bill 239-36, and of course, you know, we have mentioned, Senator Perez, that we are not the experts as it comes to the area of adoption or regulating anything with regards to childcare. In fact, with regards to certain activities, for example, the childcare itself or daycare, I believe it is the Department of Public Health and Social Services that does have to provide clearance before we're able to license such type of business. And so we do make these following recommendations: one, that if not already done so, the terms "child adoptive service" or "child adoption agency" be defined in the code. This will help facilitate the review and evaluation of a business which is contemplating undertaking such activity. And again, this may actually, there may be a definition for it, however, again, as we are not the experts in it, this is something that we're not familiar with. And also that although the bill contemplates that it is going to be the Department of Revenue and Taxation to establish the administrative requirements for this particular bill should it become law, that perhaps the Department of Public Health and Social Services also, to a certain degree, again, because of the nature of the activity and what is required, be involved in the establishment of such requirements. And again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony today, and please feel free to, I'm open and available at this time for any questions with regards to my testimony.
All right. Thank you, Director Shimizu, for your testimony. I think we have some time, if we can allow Department of Public Health to provide their testimony, and then we can have my colleagues ask questions of both agencies. Okay, so Mayfe Muco from Department of Public Health, you're recognized.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to recognize and thank Senator Sabina Flores Perez for introducing this bill, Senator Telotitigui, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Anthony Ada, and Senator Amanda Shelton. I will be reading the testimony written by Public Health's Deputy Director Terry Ugin on the testimony of Bill 239-36, and we will submit the letter before the end of the day. Good morning. My name is Mayfe Muco. I am the supervisor for the Home Evaluation Placement Service section of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and I will read Mr. Ugin's testimony. Buenos en Hafa Day, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson, Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics, Research and Planning, Senator Telotitigui, Senator Joanne M. Brown, and the Honorable Speaker, Senator Theresa M. Terlali, Speaker of the 36th Guam Legislature. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in this virtual public hearing and the opportunity to provide Mr. Ugin's testimony regarding Bill Number 239-36COR, an act to add a new chapter to the Division Guam Code Annotated, relative to business license requirements for entities engaging in the placement of children in adoptive homes. Buenos en Hafa Day. Mr. Terry Ugin, the Deputy Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, overseeing the Division of Senior Citizen, Division of Children's Wellness, and the Division of Public Welfare, and in support of the department's effort to mitigate the COVID-19 pandemic. The Department of Public Health and Social Service is in favor of Bill Number 239-36COR. We agree that the safety and well-being of Guam's most vulnerable population must be safeguarded at all times, and that the licensing of a child placing agency that operates for the purpose of placing children in homes for adoption shall uphold the same standards. Bill Number 239-36COR will allow child placing agencies to undergo a dual licensing process executed by the Department of Public Health and Social Services and the Guam Department of Revenue and Taxation. This partnership will provide a comprehensive licensing approach that shall focus on child safety by requiring a thorough background check to include fingerprinting, as well as the financial transparency needed to legitimize an agency to do businesses on Guam. Applicants' fingerprints will be used to conduct background checks to include local and court clearances, the National Crime Information Center, which is a criminal record database, and the Child Abuse and Neglect, which is a registry for child abuser. If the applicant, staff, and any other person working for a child placing agency has not lived on Guam for the last five years, they shall undergo the Adam Walsh Child Abuse Registry, which is a sex offender registry available to states and territories. While the Department of Public Health and Social Services will focus on the legitimacy of the child placing agency and its staff, the Guam Department of Revenue and Taxation will focus on their financial accountability and other related matters. Together and in partnership with DPHSS and the Guam Revenue and Taxation, we will move forward to assure the community of Guam that the safety and well-being of Guam's most vulnerable population is safeguarded and that child placing agency uphold the same standard. Once more, thank you for the honor of testifying on Bill Number 239-36.
Thank you so much, Ms. Muco. So now I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues for any questions, starting with the sponsor of the bill, Senator Telotitigui. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much, Daphne, and Mayfe, for the testimony that you provided. I'm looking forward to getting a copy and taking the recommendations, of course, Director Shimizu into play. I think what you have established at DRT right now with regards to how it works for cosmetology, you know, that the same process happened, but any opportunity that we can create a category, because I know there's about 16, if you look at the DRT form, there are 16 different types of services, such as wholesaling, retailing, service license, rental, others, profession commission, insurance premiums, contracting, interest, amusement, and others. I think it's important to create maybe a category in this, because it is important. We're talking about our children on the island, and we don't want to see anything that, you know, gives any inkling that it's not an important subject matter, for sure, because this is very important. So I appreciate the testimony, and again, it's not to create the ability for Revon Tax to create what Public Health is doing currently, you know, it's to work in tandem, and I appreciate, Mayfe, that comment that you made, you know, working together with Revon Tax to make it a dual licensing. That's already established, so greatly appreciate. I have no questions at this time. Look forward to working with the agencies to get this bill through right away. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titigui. Senator Joanne Brown, if you have any questions for Director Shimizu?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to check with Director Shimizu, I mean, with this administratively, you know, I appreciate also the favorable testimony on the bill, but how soon from your end administratively would you be able, you know, for to pass the legislation from your end to implement the requirements that would exist for your department? What's the timeframe?
Thank you, Senator Brown. I think with regards to, you know, how currently we deal with the issue of licenses, our business licenses, is we at Revon Tax are the recipients of the business license application. The business license application then goes through a process of being reviewed by the respective agencies, and it depends upon the type of application or business license activity that is being undertaken. So for example, for a restaurant, there is the sanitary permit process, right? So at the Department of Public Health side, what will happen is they, I guess, not only look at what they usually look at for in public health, but they also look at, I guess, you know, whatever other requirements are for a restaurant. So the same, I think, would follow with regards to this particular situation, and what, so with regards to the different approvals or reviews by the different agencies, you know, the department actually defers to the area, the agency, the respective agency is being the particular, I guess, the experts in that area. And once the application has gone through each of the department's GFD, DLM, DPW, it could be EPA, again, depending on the type of activity that is involved, once we get approvals from all of those agencies, then the Department of Revenue and Taxation, you know, will issue the business license, and we just rely on the expertise of Public Health. I think that with regards to the license itself, because this is a new category, on our side, the one question that, or the one item that we would need to identify or address is the issue of the licensing fee if we don't have one for this category, but with regards to the actual requirements for, you know, Public Health itself and what they will be, what will happen is once Public Health does review and provide their approval, and as long as all other approvals are received from the other agencies, DRT will just go ahead and issue the license.
So I appreciate you outlining all the steps, but I know you can't determine how quickly other agencies are going to move, but could you give an estimate? I mean, I don't doubt, Director Shimizu, you will be ready to implement as soon as possible your end. I mean, you're very, you know, very, very aggressive in taking care of your responsibilities collectively. I mean, you're all cabinet members. Is there an estimated timeframe you think that this could be put in place? Because obviously, we have an existing, you know, adoption agency that's out there and operating, and we certainly don't want to inhibit the good work that they're doing. But also, I just would like to get an idea, do you think there an estimated timeframe to actually get the process in place so that they and any other organization that wants to facilitate an adoption agency, you know, can have a timeframe on what it would take for the government to implement the requirement?
I, you know, I really can't speak on the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I'm not sure if Mayfe may have a comment on that. With regards to our agency, I would have to determine whether or not it will be required for us to have a new fee that's, or a different fee from what is already allowed by law, and that may have to go through the AAA process. So at a minimum, it will be, you know, the timeframe required to go through AAA. That's what I believe, at least on the Department of Revenue and Taxation side. On the public health side, you know, what was outlined in Deputy Director Ugin's testimony was, you know, fingerprinting and the required, all of these other requirements, which I am not familiar with. I suppose the good thing about it is that he already has some items outlined, but again, it's difficult for me to tell on the Department of Public Health and Social Services side. I can, you know, share with you, Senator Brown, we work very well with the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Senator, Director, Senator Augustine, and Deputy Director Ugin, and so that's something that, you know, although Mayfe is here, I can also reach out to them and make sure that we make this a priority.
Well, I certainly appreciate it. I'll ask Madam Chair later, I know you also have, you know, Mr. Artie Loggins also to testify, so I'll just wait with any further questions until after that happens, but thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to ask these questions. Thank you. Thank you to Director Shimizu as well.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Senator Joanne Brown. Senator Tony Ada, if you have any questions for Director Shimizu, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions for the director. Thank you, Director, for being here. Have a good day.
Tijus Massey as well.
Tijus Massey, Senator Ada, Senator Shelton, if you have any questions for the director.
Tijus Massey, Madam Chair, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you very much for your testimony. I look forward to hearing the other testimonies as well this morning.
Okay, thank you, Senator Shelton. So Director Shimizu, thank you for being here and to answer any questions, and you have a great day.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so now we will proceed with testimonies from, so we have signed up on our list. I think it was Lori Boss.
Madam Chair, if I may, I know that Mr. Loggins has another appointment. If he can go first, I appreciate it. I was messaged earlier. Thank you.
Okay, we will accept that. So Mr. Loggins, you're recognized. He also is the former Director of Department of Revenue and Taxation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Senator Perez, all the senators on the board right now. My name is Artie Loggins, Art for short. I am the former director. I have a lot of former's. I was former insurance and banking, I was former audit supervisor, criminal investigation. I've been with Revon Tax for over 40 years, or nearly 40 years, and I am here testifying on my concerns about Bill Number 239-36. This bill is relative to business license requirements for entities engaging in the placement of children in adoptive homes. I am in favor of this bill, with the exception of placing the oversight of this adoption agency with the Department of Public Health and not Revon Tax. DRT is the department where most businesses, business companies apply for a business license. There are some licenses that require further scrutiny than just clearing with the Department of Land Management, Collection Branch, Business Privilege Branch, Income Tax Processing Branch, and the File Department. Take, for example, the banking and insurance companies out there. They must be vetted through the Insurance and Banking Board. Take another example, it's the construction companies. Construction companies are licensed through the Guam Contractors License Board at the Department of Public Works. Take, for example, two barbers and cosmetologists, they're licensed at Public Health and not Revon, they are licensed at Revon Tax, but they're vetted through Public Health. Lawyers are licensed by the Guam Bar Association. Doctors go through a licensing process through the Guam Medical Board. If you want to sell liquor, you have to go through the ABC Board, you have to get vetted through these boards. If you want to be a tax preparer, you got to get clearances, you got to get, you know, you got to make sure you pass the test, you got to make sure you know what you're doing, you got to make sure your, the people that are preparing taxes know what they're doing, and they have court clearances and police clearances. Same with real estate. You have to have, if you're a real estate agent, you have to be vetted. You have to make, we have to make sure that you are not a criminal, that you don't take money. These types of licenses, when the public safety or finances are involved, there's a further process of going through these, the steps. We cannot just go ahead and issue a license to, let's say, a doc, you know, tax preparer without them knowing they can, they are able to process, to prepare taxes. The only involvement with these types of taxes with Revon Tax is usually just for the purpose of making sure that they are filing their GRT. As for like, making sure they qualify, it's through the boards, it's through these boards. Revon Tax does not have the expertise to look at these things, to examine these licenses and make sure they're qualified. And I believe this policy should apply to this type of license adoption agencies. It should go through a vetted process. Each person that's involved with... It should go through a vetted process. Each person that's involved with, uh, with our children, our children of Guam, who are gonna be adopted, should be vetted through a process. They should be looked at, uh, with scrutiny to make sure that they are not, uh, out there doing evil things to our children. And that is a process that goes through public, uh, health. They are already doing what they're doing, and now we need, we have now a company that wants to, I guess we're trying to art, outsource this, or, uh, a company that wants to adopt, uh, place children in homes. I think, um, in the past years, uh, public health has been doing this. Now we have a company that wants to come in and charge people, uh, for putting their children at an adoption agency, this adopted, and then looking for a place to put them. Uh, it's kind of worrisome to me that they only got a service license to do this. You get service license for things like cutting grass or, you know, shining shoes in public areas. Those are service license that you would use for those. But for something like this that involves a life of a child, you need to make sure that that person that's taking care of your child, or gonna take your child away and give it, put him in a different home is vetted, is all right, they're proper. I, I think that the issuance of this service license to this adoption agency needs to be held in abeyance, uh, abeyance until we establish some kind of maybe a board, uh, a board at public health that oversees this adoption agencies. So, uh, that is my testimony. I thank you for, uh, allowing me to speak on this bill. And you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Mrs. Mossy, uh, Mr. Logan for your testimony, and now I'd like to invite Lori Boss from Ohala Adoptions for, uh, for her testimony. You're recognized, Ms. Boss.
Thank you. Half a day, Madam Chair, Committee, Senators and guests. I am Lori Boss, Executive Director and one of the founders, excuse me, of Ohala Adoptions. I appreciate this opportunity to provide testimony regarding Bill two thirty-nine dash thirty-six relative to business licensure requirements for entities engaging in the placement of children. Since the organization of Ohala Adoptions in September of twenty nineteen, we've been repeatedly asking and pleading for business regulations, formatting guidelines for home study submissions and oversight from public health, and received nothing. In July twenty twenty-one, Public Law thirty-six dash thirty-nine was passed stating that the Department of Public Health and Social Services would in fact be in charge of auditing our nonprofit agency and providing those business rules and regulations that we could follow going forward. We welcomed this new law. We met with the administrators, had a good conversation. They've indicated they're working on those regulations and we're hopeful that they will be comprehensive and completed within the timeframe specified in that bill, and we will welcome them. In the meantime, we have not registered under a social license, as has been mentioned here, but we registered as a nonprofit corporation, having submitted a thorough write-up of our business to be approved by Tax and Rev, and have adopted strict ethical standards in the best practice guidelines used by reputable US adoption agencies that mentor us. We have also shared those standards and policies with DPHSS as they work on Guam standards. I'm opposed to this bill because the business license requirements suggested in this bill are also covered in Guam Public Law thirty-six dash thirty-eight, sixty-eight, excuse me, making it repetitive and unnecessary. As the only agency so far on island, we are already complying with all requirements by Tax and Rev, the federal government and local laws. This bill also requires even more governance from DPHSS, which would add to the already overburdened agency. They consistently have had difficulty responding to us or meeting deadlines. Additionally, before this body, Terry Ugan, the De- Deputy Director of Public Health openly stated that reunification is their focus, and said that they have not had an adoption since twenty seventeen. The objective of DPHSS is long-term foster care in hopes of reunification and not adoptions. An agency that is so overwhelmed and not focused on adoption does not seem the best choice to continue adding more oversight. Our desire is to find a different department for oversight, possibly the new Division of Child Welfare that Governor Leon Guerrero has just established, or to have agencies approved by the courts, as is done in ten states and Northern Marianas, and oversight by a government department. Looking at the language of this bill, it appears that none of the sponsoring senators understand how adoption agencies function or how the placement of children works on Guam. They've never reached out to us to inquire about how we operate. With all the bills brought forth this session regarding protecting our vulnerable children, not once have we received a call or email from them regarding steps that we have in place to protect children and assist expectant mothers not wanting to terminate their pregnancies, and yet not in a position to care for their children. The fear-mongering language in particular is appalling. Using words like child trafficking and criminal enterprises is offensive and aimed directly at Ohala without any personal knowledge of our services. We heard similar inflammatory comments from Terry Ugan in earlier hearings. I fail to understand what is gained in vilifying us. We are strictly a domestic agency focusing on the families and children of Guam. We offer our services at an unusually low price to make adoption a real possibility for most any family who desires it. We perform in-depth studies of potential adoptive parents, meeting all of the requirements set forth by DPHSS and more, and provide resources and emotional support for the birth mother before and after placement of a child. We've been able to give resources to help other women understand that they actually can parent if they so desire, and refer them onto Safe Haven Pregnancy Center and offer other resources for support. We are particularly careful that no money or financial support is provided to mothers placing children and strictly prohibit any incentives to relinquish their parental rights. And yet, as we try to put structure in place to assure the safety of these children, we continue to meet roadblocks and pushback instead of assistance. It has been baffling to us. We're sincerely grateful to those senators and administration officials that have reached out and generously offered help and solutions. We are currently working with GMH Hospital Administrators, Nursing Staff and Social Workers to educate and offer safe solutions to women relinquishing infants at the hospital, so they no longer feel that their best option is to continue the practice of handing infants off in parking lots. Everyone should be very aware of the fact that this has been a common occurrence for some time here. Mothers not wanting their children to be placed into the CPS system take a chance, offering their infants to unknown families who've expressed their willingness to have a child, many of which have never been background checked. I don't believe any of this is done with malicious intent, but these mothers know public health is overburdened and don't want their child languishing in foster care. Mothers share with us regularly that their desire for their children to have a permanent family to love and care for them. Introducing the world of open adoption to them is a beautiful experience, and we have witnessed it change lives. We have a lot of work to do to shift the mindset of where the real dangers lie. It is not with agencies like Ohala working to put standards in place. It's with unregulated placements and lack of supervision following these placements on island. Other dangers arise in institutional care that operate like orphanages, which the US abolished in the fifties for good reason. We don't need more facilities to house our children. We need children to be in permanent, safe families. As I stated, I'm not in support of this bill. I would recommend that we follow the laws already in place and work together to make the process of adoption work efficiently for all involved. If we actually put the needs of the children first and follow guidelines set forth in the US Safe and Stable Families Act, we could also identify children currently in foster care whose parents have not done what is required to unify with their children in a timely manner and allow them to be adopted and enjoy a happy and stable home life. We have many island families that contact us continually, willing and able to care for those children. We at Ohala did not come on to Guam as an off-island business and set up shop here to make money. We formed when we saw a dire situation and realized how much better it could be with adoption standards in place and the need for an agency to give options to mothers in determining the life situation for their children. Our desire is to work together with government agencies as we do with nonprofits to help strengthen the families of Guam. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Boss, for your testimony. Um, so now I'd like to recognize Tracy Anderson from Ohala, uh, for hers. Uh, the floor is yours, Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you for having me today, and, um, I just wanted to address two things before I start with my testimony. Um, our associate, Tanya Mike, was scheduled to be with us. She lost connection, and she has a two-year-old at home and just didn't feel like she was going to be able to read her testimony, but she did submit it, um, on, in a document, so you have access to that. Um, the other thing I just wanted to address quickly, um, the, Mr. Ilan's statements about a board. And, um, as a nurse, I understand the importance of going through a board for licensing and for, um, background checks and things like that. Um, that is completely, um, well within the rights of, of being established for the safeties. Um, but I hope that you'll see in my testimony why I'm opposed to the wording of this bill and, and setting that forward. So, um, that being said, good morning, uh, Chairperson and Senators, um, other guests. It looks like everyone else has kind of gone off to do their own thing. My name is Tracy Anderson, and I'm a Director at Ohala Adoptions. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to share testimony regarding Bill two thirty-nine thirty-six COR relative to business license requirements for entities engaging in the placement of children in adoptive homes. I am in full support of rules and regulations for adoption agencies on Guam and anywhere. Um, children should not be exposed to people who are not, um, in a position to do the right things. However, I do not support this bill. This measure is not the way to implement changes, the changes, especially the changes that are needed. If put in place, it would only stymie the progress, which has been made already in providing a much-needed resource for the women, children and families of Guam. It is my position that the offices within the Department of Public Health and Social Services that are responsible for oversight and regulation of outside entities are currently overwhelmed with the programs and oversight already assigned to them. Adding another review process will only add to the workload of overburdened staff, um, creating unnecessary and damaging extensions to deadlines, and adding one more bureaucratic step of approval from the same department that is already tasked to create and enforce rules and regulations. This has been established already in previous law. We have all stood in line at DRT. We have all seen how slowly the wheels of government bureaucracy can grind. Each redundant administrative hurdle added to this process is another delay in the placement of a child. And while that may look black and white on paper, it is important to remember every deadline missed is another heartbreak for adoptive parents who have already brought a child into their home. They bring them in to nurture and love and plan to have them in their families forever. And so, and as they wait and until the adoption process is finalized, these unsung heroes live every day in uncertainty and fear that the child might be taken from their home. Instead of adding unnecessary roadblocks, uh, to the process, we should be working together to streamline it. Public Law thirty-six sixty-eight, Section two A, states that any child placement agency operating in Guam requires a license issued by the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services. Hereafter, I'll refer to that as the department. The same rules and regulations are mandated there are to include rules setting the minimum standards governing and granting, the granting, revocation, refusal and suspension of licenses for a child placement agency and the operations of child placement agency. This wording in the public law shows that the proposed Bill two thirty-nine thirty-six is a redundant measure that is unnecessary and should not be considered further. Ohala Adoptions is a nonprofit incorporation and is doing everything required by law to provide the services we offer. We understand the need and importance of rules and regulations in practice and in licensure. We have asked for these and are willing to adhere to what is responsibly put into place. Aside from being incorporated, any work that we do is ultimately checked and double-checked by the department and approval of the HEPS Department, private attorneys that our families work with, and the Guam Superior Courts. Right now, the department already has the opportunity to be informed and aware of any services that we are providing. That being said, Ohala Direct, Ohala Adoptions Directors have been seeking out, asking for, and practically begging for the guidance, the direction and the help from public health since its inception. We've met with them several times. We've exchanged emails and have not been able to receive information and help that we need to move forward as, as a nonprofit and as a service to the island. We are very secure in how we serve our clientele. We've had mentors from adoption agencies in Kansas and Texas. All of the things that we have needed from department, the department are simply the guidelines for the HEPS home study requirements. We've asked for regulations and we expect to be audited in order to maintain good standing, um, as an adoption agency. The pushback, hesitancy, lack of communication and outright antipathy that has been demonstrated toward us has not done anything to promote faith in their cooperation with us or their ability to provide the objective critical review that Bill two thirty-nine thirty-six requires. We ask that if there is an amendment to law requiring a review for licensure of any agency, that review to be done by an agency or division separate from the department to ensure timely, objective and equitable reports. This bill and several pleaseds on this floor and in the media speak, speak to protecting our most vulnerable children. It also uses fear-based words such as trafficking, criminal activity. We've heard fraud, schemes, abuse. This tactic is being taken by individuals who have never contacted Ohala Adoptions to discuss business actions and policy. There have never been questions directed to us regarding the rigorous steps that are taken to ensure safety, security and the best quality of families for any mother to choose from. There have nev, there have been no meetings to discuss our research or knowledge of the best interest of children, but there have been many pointed statements and words of degradation for taking such a strong stance against adoption agencies on Guam. There has been little to no communication in order to self-educate or gain a better understanding. There's been some discussion, and I understand, um, the purpose for comparing licensing different entities through DRT. However, comparing the licensing in this bill of a nonprofit adoption service to that of food service or property rental is like comparing apples and oranges. Ohala is not a money-making business. We are a service. We bring families together. We are here to provide a woman the opportunity to choose what is best for her and her child. These are not rentals or products for sale. And where every quality, help, background and safety check that the department uses, our agency also uses with additional safety measures in place. Ohala Directors and social workers make home visits, learn about family histories, discuss every aspect of how adoption affects everyone involved, and create personal relationships through the process, um, from the beginning of the thought of adoption to the placement of the child through finalization and even after, as we offer educational classes. And we will continue to offer those educational classes even after placement. Comparing adoption to food service and property rental is an affront, not only to our services, but to the children and the families that we serve. Another area to address in this bill is the statement in Section one, line ten through twelve. The administrative, the administrative regulations necessary to regulate all entities authorized to operate on Guam pursuant to laws pertinent to the adoption of children. Currently, Ohala Adoptions is the only registered agency to provide legally, legally provide adoption services. But this is where things get tricky. Ohala and any other- Ohala and any other agency that is striving to adhere to all legal guidelines is then obliged to wait for and follow the department's rules and regulations as they create them or as they have to approve them on their busy, overworked schedules. While there are other entities and individuals known to us and known to many others that are exchanging babies without following any of the legal pathways that are established. Is it legal, moral, and ethical for doctors, hospitals, and pregnancy services to receive or obtain custody of a child and then in turn place that child without any oversight? Is it easier to turn a blind eye on these practices because it's already been taking place? And this is the easier path to just let it continue? These are the instances when trafficking, abuse, and child selling come into consideration. If the rules and regu- regulations constructed and put into place are truly for the protection of children, the accountability to follow these rules and regulations should be applied unequivocally to each and every entity that places children. Instead, it seems certain factions of the department and this legislature are more interested in protecting their sphere of power and maintaining the status quo, which is clearly and fundamentally broken, than they are in finding ways to work together in order to provide loving homes to our island's most vulnerable. Currently, Ohala Adoption has three families with private attorneys that are awaiting finalization. We have completed all documents required by the department for the home studies and compiled interviews and information for each family. Even with all of the preparation and a written report for one family, the worker still needed to request an extension from the courts. This is just one example of a time that Ohala Adoption and the department could work together to more efficiently benefit families and take some of the workload off of the HEPS department. Polk's Eye is a word we hear often from the community, and I'm sure you're aware it's a moral verb meaning to nurture. It refers to the common Pacific Islander practice of informal adoption extend by extended family members. This is something that in educating the community, we've tried to explain that this is an amazing tradition. Families should always come first. But there are cases where another family needs to step forward for the best interest of the child. Our services provide that option. We've served the families and the culture of Guam. From Guampedia.com, Kelly G. Marsh writes, "Many feel that the current U.S. legal system has reduced, reduced the occurrence of Polk's Eye and question whether this legal system is best serving to moral families. I would proffer that the nurturing tradition of Polk's Eye can continue while also serving the best interests of the child by providing them with a permanent, committed family that promises to be theirs forever through adoption." In the end, even though I do not support this bill, I hope that the important points it has brought to our attention can be addressed. Allowing for cooperation between all entities with the heart to care for and serve the children of Guam. Thank you for allowing me this time to present my testimony. I apologize. I know it was lengthy. But I feel very passionate and I consider each and every point to be important to include. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for your testimony. So I do have some questions for Mayfe, Ms. Miko. Since the passage of Public Law thirty-six sixty-eight, there was a requirement for interim rules and regulations. And I guess the date we set was in June of this year. The bill was enacted in December of twenty-seven. And so I know you discussed in your testimony regarding some of the the checks that you are doing with regards to like fingerprinting, background checks, including, I believe, any kind of, what is it, Walsh, the Walsh background check?
Adam Walsh background check if they haven't lived on island for five years.
Okay. And so can you maybe explain or discuss what the status is of the internals and regulations? And I guess how would that play with, you know, this, this legislation? How would it, how would you coordinate it?
Okay, well, currently the team, I'm sorry. Currently, the team here at Public Health is working collaboratively with our federal partners to develop an adoption packet. And we have to include the application as well as the guidelines, the guidelines to, to instruct what should be in the adoption packet. So we're still working on that. We're also working with our federal partners on the rules and regulations to run an adoption agency. We are working to ensure that we do meet that timeline before June first. And hopefully, you know, we've come a long way and we were going to, we want to make sure that background checks are completed. We, we not only do that for for this current application for adoption agency, but we also do that for our foster parents. For our foster families who would like to become licensed, we require a court and police clearance. We require an N C I C background check, a CAN background check, as well as if they have not lived on island for five years. Because some of our foster parents are from the military and they've lived in the States. We require an Adam Walsh background check as well to ensure the safety of our children.
Yeah, and so basically what I see is that yeah, this, this legislation would add that ability to enforce even further. I, I think it's really about making sure that the agencies are, you know, acting in good faith. And it gives that added layer of protection for those that are not, right? So those that are, are acting in good faith, you know, there should be no issue, I would think. Those that are here and not up, up to par with the, your guidelines, the rules and regs. I think it's important to have that added layer of protection. So I don't have any other questions at this time, so I'd like to open up the floor to Senator Tydekin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be last, allow my colleagues to ask any questions.
Okay, Senator Joanne Brown, your record.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You know, in, in listening to the testimony, and I think one of the things we need to stop is looking at this from the vantage, understandably, there's currently only one adoption agency operating, but I think we need to stop looking at it from a vantage point that, you know, this issue being brought up somehow is reflective of issues for or against Ohala. I understand from their, their perspective, and I, I did speak with both of the ladies that testified this morning a few months ago on previous legislation to talk about these issues. And I think we, you know, I'm not against adoption. I definitely would love to see children in our community, and we know that there are children that are falling through the cracks. We know that children from the moment of conception may not have a welcoming family and that when they are born, for those that do and are born, we want to ensure that they have a safe and healthy environment to grow up in. There even things I agree that at some point, I don't like this extended foster system either. I, I'm very direct about things. I want to make sure if a parent cannot take the responsibility within a reasonable period of time to take responsibility of properly raising their children. I don't think those poor children should be floundering in the foster system and not have stability. And those are things I'd very, be very, very supportive of. But the view that we're going to look at it only from our own single perspective and biases, there's a bigger picture here. And because these structures were not implemented prior, and definitely I appreciate the efforts of Ohala and the work that the members are doing because they saw a need in the community that was real and was tangible and it was there. So definitely all the efforts and work that has been put up to come forth is, is recognized and appreciated. At the other end of the spectrum, I think there's a need as a government to make sure there are structures in place and requirements in place for standards to be met for the safety of these children. Because any, and we discussed this before, anyone else can come into Guam tomorrow and set up their own adoption agency and not be as responsible in wanting to meet requirements or standards or have the same level of care and interest. And we'd like to think, oh, that's not the case, but I'm sorry, we see children being abused in this community every single day. We hear about it. We read about it. I'm waiting to see what the plea agreement is going to be from the Attorney General's Office for that gentleman. I couldn't call him a gentleman. This man that raped this ten-year-old girl. You know, you look at these things happening in this community. It's appalling that these things happen, that the most innocent, the most vulnerable in our community, and we, we recognize that as our children. And we also recognize that for our elderly here who cannot protect themselves are being abused on a regular basis. So certainly, I think we all want to make sure that as much as we can, that we, to what degree we can as legislators, put these requirements in place. And, and look at the reality. If I've got to go to, you know, get my hair cut, dyed or curled or whatever the heck it may be, there is a, you know, there's a permitting process for that. There is a business license process for that. There are standards that need to be met. But I have to say quite frankly, in my time back, this last, what, fourteen months in the Guam Legislature, this is the most political piece of legislation, not this bill in particular, but the subject matter related to the adoption process has been one of the most political bills I've ever seen. The maneuvering that has gone on, that has so politicized this process, almost made it distasteful to a certain degree. Because I think collectively, we all want to ensure the best outcome for these children. And yes, the government has bureaucracy and by all means, you know, there's obviously improvements that can be made. But we do have to have a structure in place that gives us comfort level that any other group, be it Ohala or any other group, and I've said this before, that comes in has to meet these requirements. Because I would love to hope that everyone has the best interest in their mind and heart and soul. I'd love to think that everyone's a good person, but I think as we live life, we know better. That's not always the case. And I can't imagine, even if it was not my child, I couldn't imagine not ensuring that that child is taken care of and that they're safe and that they're loved. Be there in my child or someone else's. Because I don't know, maybe I might want to adopt a child in my life so I could, you know, provide that kind of stability. And I'm sure there are many others. I think Ohala very much is offering that opportunity in our community. So please don't interpret this as, oh, it's anti-Ohala again, or anti our work and what the good things we're trying to do. That's not the case at all. But I do want to see standards in place so that everybody knows what they are and that there is a review process. Because yes, even though we might have the best of intentions, there are others that don't. And how do we address them if we don't have requirements in place? So I think standardizing the business license process, because that was brought up a few months ago with the other pieces of legislation that just go up there. I don't have to meet any requirements. I'll just get my license and I'm in business. And I think we all agree. I mean, collectively, certainly the representatives from Ohala in talking to Ms. Boss and Ms. Anderson, I think they also, they, they're very forthcoming. They said, yes, please, regulate us. Make sure there are standards in place so that we know what they are. And also the government and the community knows what they are. And I think when we have all that collectively, then there's some comfort level in that. So that's the reason why I, I, you know, co-sponsored this legislation. That's the reason I'm supportive of it. And I think, you know, we need to look at it from a broader perspective than, than our own investment in this. But I did want to ask Public Health with regards to their responsibilities and oversight here. Time-wise, you know, asking also Rev and Tax, how soon could they facilitate? Because we don't want to belabor this process any longer than necessary. I mean, we understand there's an ongoing, ongoing processes already with Ohala with regards to, you know, adoptions for getting our children into safe families. So what timeframe would it be for, for Public Health, understanding your responsibilities, Mayfe? I know you have a lot, you have a lot in your plate to do. But how soon do you guys from your end could facilitate the implementation of this? Should it become law?
Well, the team here at Public Health have, had, have been working extensively on the application as well as the guidelines. We're ninety-five percent completed with the application.
So if, if, you know, this bill becomes law, you know, a month from now, I'm just giving that as a timeframe, an example. How, how soon from your end could you meet your responsibilities to facilitate with Rev and Tax implementing this? So that there's no, you know, extended timeline out there for, for Ohala or any other organization to comply? How soon could we get that process moving?
Okay, so although we were given a timeline for June first, we've been, like I said, we've been working on the application and the guidelines. I don't want to speak personally on my, for myself on when it would be done. But I hope that it would be done within the next couple of months.
And I, I'm sure, I think we'd all want to, we could also, and we could also, I'm sure, keep tabs as well with, with your agency and, and Rev and Tax to make sure that all the key players here are on track. And I don't doubt you personally in terms of the work that you do is already an example of your investment in this process. So I mean, I think we can do that. And I'm, I'm happy to hear that you guys are moving as far along as you are. Because once the structure is in place, once we know what the, the, the rules of the game are, so to speak, then we can all move on. We can all get on to the things we, we want to do and put in place. And those of us that are policymakers, love us, hate us, whatever the case may be, and trust me, I felt all those emotions over the years when I was in or out of office. You know, we, we represent the public interest in wanting to, to ensure and have, like I said, it comes down to comfort level to make sure. In spite of all our limitations, and granted, they do exist, government is a bureaucracy and it moves very slow. But I think with this issue in particular, it has our attention. And we're certainly not going to, you know, kick back and, you know, they'll get around to it whenever. I think collectively, we all want to see this process move forward. But I by all means believe there needs to be a, a process in place, a standard process in place under which, you know, organizations that are involved in this, to include Ohala, to include anybody else who's going to walk through the door, if at all, that we all know what those standards are. And I think once that's in place, I think, like I said, we can all get on with the business of what it is we need to do. So with that, Madam Chair, I don't have any other comment at this point, but I appreciate the opportunity to comment and also inquire from Public Health my question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Brown. So, Ms. Anderson, you wanted to say something, but is it anything in addition to the testimony that you provided? Because I think it was very clear that it wasn't a personal issue for you, that it was more of a procedural issue.
Correct. There, I just wanted to respond to a couple of the statements from Senator Brown.
Yeah, is it a different, in addition to the testimony? It's, it's, it's a supplemental to your testimony?
Correct.
Okay. I, I will.
I will just be two minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll have you.
Okay, thank you. I, I just want to address the fact that though, you know, we spoke to the negative language, that is is taken a little bit personally, but mostly the education of the community to understand about adoption is being affected by the language. It would be really beneficial as we move through this process if the language could be more positive, could be more factually based and not so fear-based. And not, not necessarily for our services in general, but for the education of the community. So they understand that adoption is not a bad thing, that it can be a good thing, but it needs these regulations. And then the only other thing was that there's been consistent speaking of any agency care. Anyone could come in, form an agency, and do whatever they want without these rules from Public Health. And that is very, very much untrue in that there is no moving forward. A child could be placed with a family, but they cannot get a birth certificate. They cannot do any of the legal processes to get the court documents that they need to move forward and, and maintain life with a child, whether it be traveling or registering for school or doctor's appointments. In order to move into that family environment, they need a legal advisor. And the legal advisor is not going to do anything that is opposed to public health laws. And public health laws are not going to do anything that's opposed to court laws. So the regulations are priority for sure. But there is not as much fear, again, of another agency establishing and doing such horrible, perfect things. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Senator Tonyada, he was here initially, but he's now not here. Okay, so Senator Tydekin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for your testimony, both for Ms. Boss and Mrs. Boss and Ms. Anderson. And to Mayfe for being here as well. and to Mayfe for being here as well to testify. And please, you know, I share the sentiment to Senator Brown, but unfortunately, your testimony, Ms. Anderson, you know, struck a nerve when you mentioned in your testimony that instead, and I quote, you said, "Instead, it seems certain factions of the department and this legislature are more interested in protecting their sphere of power and maintaining the status quo, which is clearly and fundamentally broken." You know, I do take offense to this, because the senators, we're looking at both the entire system as not just one agency, but the entire system. And I can, you know, assure you, Ms. Anderson, we are not here for anything but protecting the safety and well-being of our island and our people that here on Guam. I don't know what they do in the mainland when it comes to, you know, foster care, not foster, but adoption agencies over there. But here, we are a family-oriented, you know, community. It's in our, it's in our blood, it's in our nature that when individuals are placed in foster care, the intent is to reunite them with their biological parents. You know, once, you know, sometimes mothers or fathers need assistance and to get, you know, help and assistance to basically get their act together so that they can be reunited with their biological parents. And sometimes on Guam, you know, many of our grandparents, the grandparents, you know, take their children, their grandchildren under, you know, basically a guardianship and later on go into an adoption. You talk about using certain words that should not be used. I mean, we looked at, anybody can Google or is listening to this, the story of the Marshall Islands, which is basically in our back door. It happened in our Pacific Islands where there was human trafficking, and it started by a company that came onto the island as an adoption agency. So we're just putting out facts. We're not creating any of these things, these, what we brought up. These are stories that actually happened, and we don't want to see that happen on our island. You know, so that I really take offense to, because the bills that we put, the bills that were put out before these rules and regulations that were put in place, everybody agrees to, that should have been, rules and regs should have been put in place before any of the bills, Bill 108, Bill 109, put into place. So, Mayfe, there was a comment that brings concern by one of the testimonies from Ohana, is that babies are being passed in the parking lot. You know, I'm not sure what they're talking about, but, Mayfe, did you hear of anything? Because this is kind of disturbing.
I have not.
Neither have I, you know, so I'm just kind of curious about that. I know that Public Health is doing everything they can possible to reunite these children with their biological parents, and that's why the low the low amount of adoptions on Guam are like, what, one in the last three years? What concerns me greatly is the fact that here's a nonprofit organization, which I want to ask questions about, that is advertising in the newspaper. This is shocked some of our local community, even brought to my attention, shockingly, like, it's almost like advertising, you know, to have your child adopted. And it's very unsettling, because like I said, our community is a very close-knit family type of community. And when children are, cannot be cared for by their biological families, usually families step in, aunts, uncles, godparents, and grandparents, most especially. I don't think in advertising. And, you know, I'm asking to Ohana, if you can hold off on advertising until these rules and regulations are put in place, you know, I personally greatly appreciate that if you could. Because right now, it's sending out a bad message to the public that here, we're allowing this company to come onto this island and advertising with no regulations or guidelines in place. It sends a bad message out, and that's only what the senators are doing here, like I said earlier, what's in the best interest of our children, our community. Being repetitive was a comment that was made earlier. No, I think Public Health hit it on the nose when it calls, when it talks about dual licensing. What this bill does, and as I mentioned earlier, to rest assured, Section 8 will be deleted, will be my recommendation to the committee chair to delete that section to alleviate any kind of responsibilities from Department of Revenue and Taxation, but only to issue out the EIN number in the GRT once it's been approved by Public Health and following the guidelines. And this is the same thing they do for cosmetology. And if it's as simple as getting that same kind of improvement from two agencies for someone to cut hair, let alone for an adopting of a child, I don't see an issue with that, and I'm hoping you don't see an issue with that. So what this bill does is just allow public, Department of Revenue and Taxation, to first get the clearance before issuing out the EIN number. A nonprofit organization that you mentioned earlier, I was curious, I was hearing rumors that that Ohala was charging a application fee for people to come and file to be an adopted parent, that you also receive donations. So basically, you're having, you're using the funding to pay for salaries. Are these salaries also paid for yourself? Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Boss, are you paying yourself through the nonprofit organization to run this company? And if not, then what is the funding used for?
That is absolutely a valid question. And honestly, one of the first things that people always ask is how that works. I want to clarify or make you aware of that Ohala has been offering services for two and a half years now. Lori, Kelly, and I have not received any compensation for the time and work that we've put in. Every dollar that has been used is set aside. We have all the financial documents showing that we have paid social workers, we've paid social media, and we've paid community liaisons to do work with us and to help us further the mission. But as far as personal payment, we have yet to have any of that. We do use the $150 of the application fee to process things and to start working with the families. That is solely because we are working with them directly to help them learn what the process is for the home study. We're helping them gather their information. We're helping, we're giving them the information they need to get their FBI fingerprints. So the $150 application fee is basically to provide the services to get their home study started.
Thank you so much for that. And, Mayfe, is there a charge when, in a public health charge for anybody who wants to become an adopted parent at Public Health? Is there a fee?
No, there's no fee. There's no fee to submit an adoption application.
Okay. Oh, just a minute. I'll be right with you, Ms. Boss, Mrs. Boss. So, Mayfe, so anybody on Guam can come into Public Health right now currently and fill out any kind of application to be an adoptive, as well as foster parent, without any cost whatsoever. I just wanted to verify that. Okay.
There's two applications, one to become a foster parent and one to be placed on our adoption list. If you submit an adoption application, it needs to be submitted on a yearly basis.
Okay.
Because that application gets expired within the year.
Well, thank you so much, Mayfe, and I also like to give you kudos for the work you're doing with the mayors and incorporating them as well into the foster group to taking in children. I greatly appreciate that. I just wanted to give you kudos for that. Appreciate. Mrs. Boss, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a few comments and the questions that you had, Senator Taidigui. There's, Department of Health, of course, never has a fee because they are, you know, when they take children, they are Guam's children. Those parents are receiving a stipend to care for those children, you know, as foster children and such. The parents that we place children with don't get a dime from the government. They take it all on themselves. They do it all themselves. The two agencies, especially American Adoptions, that has been mentoring us and teaching us best business practices when we had a lack of rules specific to that here, were telling us that application fees are necessary. Usually, they're several hundred dollars. They're serious in just to let the families know that, you know, make a commitment of sorts, that we start all this process and do all this work and care our social workers, and then they don't just flick out if, when it's free. Our first few, we actually did offer for free because we didn't want to, you know, we wanted to get everything right. The handing, the ad that you talked about, the ads that Daily Post has offered us this year, those are to let women know their options. These are not advertising to say, give us your babies. There isn't a single woman that has come to us and we say, oh, great, you want to give away your baby? That is not the process. It's to let people know that there is something besides abortion or living with their choice. There is something that they can do, and that is very empowering for women, to let them know there's a choice. We don't, we have helped more people parent their own children than we have placed children. That isn't our goal, is to tear families apart at all. And our first line, if they decide they definitely cannot raise a child, is to go to their own family. We research out their own family and their members, and we've had several that have gone to cousins and relatives. That's wonderful. That is not our, we are here to pick up the other women, the other pieces of the puzzle. When you address the handing babies in the parking lot, it's one of the first things I talked to Terry Uggan about. He said, yes, he was very well aware, well, very well aware of that fact that this happens. And I asked him, what do we do about it? The other thing that the hospital administrators and doctors have talked to us about, that I think we mentioned here before, is women that relinquish at the hospital. You know, many women don't go in for prenatal care. They arrive at a hospital, they give birth, and at that point, they tell the doctors or the social workers or the nurses, I don't want this child, I can't raise this child. What do we do? The practice has been literally going down the hallways and asking, does anybody know anybody who wants a child? Those, that's great of them to take it up. You know, they don't, they want to help, but they're also not background checked. You know, there's nothing in place. Now, if they proceed and go through with an adoption, then they have to go through everything that Mayfe has talked about. They have those guidelines. They have, you know, they have to hire an attorney and do that, if they do that. That's kind of up to them if they do that. So these are very real concerns. And when we addressed this with Terry, he said, I can't take care of all those children also. They're overwhelmed, as we all know. They have so much to do. We were hoping to come in and help in those situations to help with safe, ethical placements for those children.
Thank you, Mrs. Boss, for that, for that information. But, you know, it's ironic, I'm hearing from Mayfe, who covers not only foster care, but adoption and everything under this guy when it comes to children, and not being, not hearing something like that happening in the parking lot. In the event there is a doctor who delivers a baby and the mother does not intend to want to keep it or makes a decision right then and there, I'm sure the doctors are well-formed to call Public Health to take over at that moment. I don't think it's a matter of like, does anybody want a baby, you know, in the hallway? I don't think that happens at all. And so I think not everything's perfect. You know, Public Health is doing the best they can. I think they do a great job. I mean, it's obvious. The work that they're doing where adoptions are, you know, very far and few. My concern here, and I hope you ladies understand, is that I don't want somebody coming to this island right now, because there are really no teeth to the bill that was recently passed in doing rules and regulations. If they don't have the interim rules and regulations in place by June, there's nothing in the law that takes away anything from Public Health. It says shall do it. But if they're not able to do it, where's the teeth? What restricts them from doing anything or takes away funding from their agency or anything like that? What I'm doing is putting something in place right now, just in case they don't meet the deadline that's incorporated in law. And believe you me, there's been a lot of bills that have been introduced and they haven't followed through with the law. But like I said, there's no teeth. This way, we'll ensure that anybody coming to this island, and I'm hoping if your license to be a nonprofit organization to run as an adoption agency comes up for renewal will be held until these rules and regulations are put in place. That's all this bill does. It provides this dual licensure, like most other, you know, categories that are registered at Rev and Tax, as well as Public Health, are put into place. It's a protection mechanism. And you constantly say that you are in support of rules and regulations. If that's the case, then I don't see an issue why this bill should not go through, because all it does is requires that Department of Public Health and Social Services create the rules and regulations before Rev and Tax gives any kind of agency running as an adoption agency a licensure or even a nonprofit status. That's all it does. So, and I think you guys both agree to that. So other than that, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to hear your concerns, the things that you've brought up, and Public Health for being here, especially today. And I, you know, like to encourage you too, very much, to try and get the rules and regulations. I know we've been working on this, Mayfe, since last year. You know, trying to push this through for a while now, and appreciate your hard work on that. But in the meantime, we're trying to put something in place that'll ensure some protection until then, because right now, we do have an adoption agency that's working on this island without the rules and regs. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity, and I look forward to an expeditious committee report on this. Because we are, you know, June is still a while away from today, so it would be very helpful right now for our children and the safety of our children today. Thank you.
That was Massey, Senator Taidigui, and thank you to all that have come here today to provide testimony. We do appreciate your feedback and input. If there are any further questions from my colleagues, if not, if there are no further testimonies or questions, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning will now adjourn. The time is now 10:31 a.m. Thank you and have a great day.